My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies in which any business affecting the interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the vision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting. It will be publicized by having a date time and place thereof, sent to the record, Town News, and indoor Starlight newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school district principals' offices, faculty rooms, and doorways. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, if smoking of tobacco is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including when added to the parking lots, grass areas, and athletic fields, violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100. Roll call.
Here.
Roger. Stephanie?
Here.
Patty?
Here.
Paul? Dot?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Vito?
Here.
And Joe?
Here.
And Marissa?
And here.
Okay, I'm actually going to read the mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community in an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, and to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. And at this point, we have our public comments, and they're only agenda items only. At the end of the meeting, we will have the town hall meeting, where a lot of questions can go up on any different matter, but at this time, if anybody has any comments on the agenda items, if you come to the microphone, identify yourself, and you have a few minutes. And seeing as there are none, we will have the next thing, Patrick, which is our presentation.
If you could, A, just bear with me, on the Eisenhower Award, Dr. Roshong said he'll be here a little bit later in the evening. He couldn't make it right at eight o'clock, so if we could hold that presentation a little bit, and I just wanted to mention that Mr. Barnes did contact me earlier in the day to say that he would not be available for this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Which brings us right along to our student number report, number two.
So, well, we are headed towards the end of the year, so we don't have a lot on this, but we had the Physics Dorney Park field trip, which went well, that was last week. We have finals starting next week on Friday. We have the Spring Sports Awards Dinner, which is tomorrow night, and also the senior prom is on the fourteenth, so, and then we wrap up the year.
Anything else, though? Just making sure.
Brings us to the president's report. Not a whole lot to add, other than on the spring sports is on Tuesday. This coming Thursday is the senior awards, or as my friend Vito says, Monday night, because all the other, the community with all the scholarships that they provide to our senior students is phenomenal, so anybody'd like to come and see Thursday night at seven?
Yep.
Just one other thing, too, is anybody out there, there are, what, three, three seats on this board up for election in November. If you do have to, you can pick up your ballot or your petition, thank you, and you have to have it in by next Tuesday, so just a reminder, if anybody wants out there. Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay. Don't know, but just, it is something you have to, if you want to, pick it up and get it into the county election board tomorrow. And other than that, nothing else to report. Patrick?
To add to what Mr. Manzelli brought up, I'm pleased to be able to indicate that both the high school and the middle school participated in the Bergen County Teen Arts Program, which the exhibit was on May, I think, the fourteenth, I apologize, at Bergen Community College, as well as many members of the RDTV were there presenting their work. And I'm pleased to indicate that two of our seventh grade students, Juan Montagna and Devon Link, as well as six of our eighth grade students, Susan Kang, Irene Kim, Jennifer Schwartz, Sohe Park, Polina Yavskova, and Lauren Yun, their work was recognized for special recognition, and Juan and Irene are also having their work displayed at the Bergen County Administration Building, which is one Bergen County Plaza in Hackensack. It's from June eighth through the twenty-second of June, so we're pleased that they are participating in that program and that they were selected. There were about eighty different schools from the county, there were probably 2,000 students that were involved in that program over the course of the day, and I'm just happy that we are participating in it again. Riverdale used to be an avid participant, and our participation waned, and now it's back, so I'm quite pleased about that. And then also, we had, from our English department, we had, from Brian Reich's class, Emily Hagobian, who won the 2012 Scholarship Art Writing Award Silver Program, or Silver Key for Poetry. This was at the Young Playwrights Program. We had, from Sharon Milch's class, we had Kira Cohen, who won. We had some runners-up, there were Alexandria Pallada, Laura Klepper, Tyler Jonas, and Aaron Walker. And from Sue Carney's class, we had two students, Yun B. No, who won first prize, and Joan Kaio, who won third prize at the program. So as you can see, our students are academically and artistically active, and we're very pleased about that. And finally, I'd like to indicate that Friday evening, 24 students from the island of Guadalupe and three teachers came to us on an exchange program, and we had a breakfast with them today, where they were introduced to the whole high school community. They're here on an exchange program for about 10 days, and then, I believe it's in February of 2013, the board approved an exchange where we're having our French students go down to the island of Guadalupe for their, for their, to close the loop on the exchange. And then, finally, at the last board meeting, there was some discussion about organic chemistry, and the board asked me to do some further research on it. I forwarded a memo to the board regarding the opportunities to offer the class, and the number of students who had signed up for it, and what conflicts existed. To be very succinct about it, there were three opportunities during the course of the schedule, period two, four, and five, to offer the program, and at each one of those periods, there are a number of students who have conflicts with one or more of their core courses. Nine of 10 students had a conflict in period two, eight of 10 had a conflict in period four, and four of 10 had a conflict in period five. And those conflicts, as I indicated to you, are with the core subject areas where there are singletons or other end-of-year, end-of-term courses, which there's no other place for, if a student wanted to take the class, they'd have to drop one of those classes in order to move over to the other. And I've listed the courses for everybody to it, so my recommendation and the recommendation of the high school that we are unable to run the class remains as it was at the last board meeting.
I have some further questions regarding this. Would you prefer we wait until the end of the meeting?
Old business, okay.
Raises to committee reports. Budget and finance, no report? Campus facilities?
We met about a month ago, May 7th. The next meeting is scheduled for next week, the 12th. At our last meeting, we managed to work through the agenda, which consisted basically of an overall review of completed projects for the school year 11-12, as well as projected new projects for the school year 12-13. We spent some time reviewing two, two specific projects, the conversion of a former growing garden classroom into an LLD classroom, that's a special ed class, as well as the electric service system improvement to the middle school. We also reviewed the projects that are planned and done over the summer, and the committee started a discussion about the policy that states what fees are being charged for the use of the facilities. The conversion of the growing garden room to a special ed classroom is a priority project that Tom will put on the front burner, since now he's unable to negotiate the cost of the project with contractors, due to the fact that twice the bids were rejected, has been over the budget. We were informed that electrical service upgrading at the middle school will actually be done in phases, and the phases are broken down per the grid zones that the middle school is subdivided into. Upcoming projects include the replacement of air conditioning units, and both single classroom units, as well as rooftop units, but these, these projects are not funded, and they'll be done as funding becomes available. The use of school facilities, just to inform everyone, last year netted about $10,000 in gross income, and that did not include additional charges, invoices sent to LSEs where custodial help was needed to clean up classrooms, if that's what was, if that's what was leased. We asked Tom Boomfiglio, the business administrator, to prepare a cost that outlines the cost of running the special ed class, which is a class that will house incoming students from outside district. I believe there is four students committed as of May 7th. That number may change. The point of the matter is, we really should know what is the real cost of bringing in outside students versus the services that we are going to provide, just as a matter of information for all of us. Dr. Rant will provide us with guidelines from the New Jersey Department of Education about the latest, the latest reserve, and how to set up an emergency reserve account within the limits of the multiple new laws that have been passed over the past two years. And finally, we did, we did request additional information as to what is the impact of project being done, capital project being done, that use up on the availability, the availability of excess fund that technically could be distributed back to the residents, to the taxpayers. We don't have an answer yet on that, but that's, these are some of the issues that the committee is working on. And as I said, the next meeting is on June 12th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul's in here for community relations, but is anything to add? No report. Personnel, there's no report?
I'm sorry, I have space in my office.
Community relations, I know Paul's not here. Anything that you guys would like to?
We did need a community study, but we did need a follow-up survey going out in, well, in June, obviously, in the already, closer to the end of the school year, that will consist of information regarding tutoring, and a few questions regarding summer interest.
Interest, right, enrichment things that were discussed.
Will there be some open-ended questions? Do we allow some verbatim?
The questions are, are kind of like, if you answer yes to this, it leads to this, kind of a thing, like, depending on, because a no is a, like, if you don't use a tutor, you know, you're kind of going to jump.
A no is an end of the road.
Right, it's an end of the road, so.
So, in other words, if we say yes, then how many times, no?
But there's a lot of. But are there any open-ended questions to allow for?
You mean a comment?
I wouldn't call it a comment, because I don't want people to make, I'm not asking for specific comments, but if people had, you know, ad lib comments about the tutoring questions, is there room for them to put in their?
I don't believe so.
No.
Yeah, I've said that before, that I'm a firm believer of, very often, the most valuable thing that you get out of asking survey questions is the verbatim that you get back. So, likely did the latter.
Sometimes it's hard to synthesize that verbatim.
I understand, but having something is better than, the ability to have something to synthesize is better than not having it at all. So I'm going to, again, make the request that if the survey hasn't gone out yet, that you put some space in there for verbatim questions.
And I'd like to add my vote, add my comment, the same thing, is that allowance we made wherever possible, not just in this survey, but whenever we go out to the public, that there be at least some room for an open-ended question or response, because we may be missing something, we are not all knowing, which is why we're doing the survey in the first place, I believe, and it would be useful to gather other information. And we might not even know the right question to ask, and something that's open-ended can get the response. And so I would implore you that when we do this, we take the time and effort and expense of doing a survey, that we allow some type of opening for the public to go and give a comment that is not a yes, no, how many.
Is that the chair go? That's great.
I think I'd have to agree with Roger and Michael on this, and I know there's always a lot of different opinions on this board, but I think, in one of our last discussions, I think there was a majority interest in placing some type of comment box. I don't have the exact numbers in my head right now, but there was an interest of having some kind of open-ended field that people could just put in, you know, whatever responses are on their mind, and sometimes you get some really great ideas that way, so I guess I'd have to agree with the prior two comments, to put something in there possibly.
I would suggest, too, that, you know what, if people don't know, that there is an email address for the board as well, so that we all get that. If there are comments, all too, you're free to do that at any time, you don't have to wait for any survey, but you can send that an email, or you can always, as he makes his appearance back, contact Mr. Fletcher in his office as well. If there's any suggestions and all too, you're always free to do that, you don't have to wait for a survey, so. Personnel, there's no report? Policy?
Yes, there's a couple of policies, there's two policies on for first reading, 5118 non-residents, and 9140, board representatives. We've discussed those, there's just minor changes in that. 9130 will come next meeting?
Yeah, I apologize, that's completely my fault. I did not give that to Mickey or Sue to put on the agenda.
So that we will see at the next meeting. I'm sorry, I'm trying to read my, also, policy 5132 dress code, it's actually a regulation, is also here for approval. We discussed briefly the possibility of using, we currently use an outside vendor to check over our policies, to make sure they're in compliance. There was talk of seeing if, and they do do it, New Jersey School Boards Association also offers the same policy. We discussed it at the end of the meeting, so we really didn't go into depth, so it's something we have to revisit again. We have another meeting this Wednesday, of which I have a conflict, so we'll have to see if we can switch a date. Okay?
Stephanie, tri-district?
Yeah, I don't really remember the timing and whether I ought to report, which I guess I didn't, about the tri-district. Was that after our last meeting?
It was May 8th we had our meeting, so we had.
So I reported on it, right?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Nothing's happened since then.
No report for the tri-district curriculum. Tom, can I have a mode, or can I have a motion on the consent agenda items?
Several.
Roger? A discussion on the consent items? Dot, I see I have a call.
Yeah, I'd like to poll number eight, excuse me, 1011, for a separate vote.
One more time?
10, under 10, the Finance District Operations, number 11. And I have two quick questions. Patrick, can you tell me, what is the difference in terms of NCLB funds and tri-district funds? Both of these grants that we receive, or is this any of this taxpayer money, or?
Yes.
Okay, which one?
As the LEA, Local Education Association, Riverdale has the responsibility of administering the tri-district funds. We also are serving as the LEA as a consortium of the three districts for the submission of the NCLB funds. Okay? So, on Riverdale's books, there are three separate sets of accounts. There's one, which are only local Riverdale funds. There's one, which are tri-district funds, which is roughly a third from Riverdale, a third from Oradel, a third from River Edge. They come together, those are the ones that are commonly referred to as tri-district funds. And then, NCLB is a separate set of funding that occurs as a part of that grant process. So, the local Riverdale funds and the tri-district funds are from local taxpayer money, NCLB is federal grant money.
Okay, that's obvious, totally right.
However, there is a very clear, if you will, comparison of the use of the funds. They align themselves quite well.
Okay, so, on an agenda item that calls for tri-district funds, it's the same as before? If it's something maybe that's training for our elementary school teachers, we're still paying in a third, and none of that is grant money under tri-district? There's no comparison of that?
Correct, like, as an example, item A2 is federal money.
Right.
Item E1 is, is local money.
Combo.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, it says NCLB and tri-district, so it's a.
Right.
Okay. All right, and then, my second question was on, just to confirm that item 10-8 is the same management plan as previous, just?
Yes, it is.
Okay, it wasn't in the packet, that's.
No. You're more than welcome to see if you like.
No, it's fine. I've seen it.
Any other questions or comments on the consent items? Tom, can I get a roll call then on the consent agenda item? Roger?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes, to all, except it's staying on 7A1.
Michael?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes. And I have a motion on item number nine-one. Discussion on this item? These are the policies. First reading, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get there, first reading of policies on the 5,000 series and 9,000 series, 5,000 on non-residents, and 9140 on board representatives. I'm sorry, trying to make sure I got everything here.
Yeah, I do have some points I'd like to bring up for discussion, and this would be on the policy changes being made to 5118 for.
being made to 5118 for non-residents, and, you know, I've been thinking a lot about this. This is for children of non-domiciled staff members, and I almost think maybe this just has to go back to committee one more time, because there's a couple of things I think that need clarification. And the first point that I'm a little concerned about is that this policy does not, as written, does not treat all of our staff equitably. Basically, as some of the contracts are written, it does exclude a particular group of individuals, and I'm concerned about that, so that's the first point. The second point, I think it needs to be further defined, as to what is a child of a non-domiciled staff member. I looked at some of our contracts, one in particular talks about the child must be residing with that staff member, and you know, these things kind of get a little hairy sometimes when staff members are in different domestic situations, but you want to define who the child, the residency of the child. One of our contracts states the staff must be the parent, the stepparent, or the legal guardian, and a further clarification that there would be no transportation offered. And I just think our policies should be as clear and as detailed as possible, so we don't get into a gray area. Does this child qualify for this opportunity or not? And so defining that it be the parent, or the stepparent, or the guardian, or declaring that the child must reside with that staff member, I think that should be written into the policy. And then the third concern, I'd really like to understand a bit better, what exactly are we talking about in terms of tuition costs? And I know everybody probably saw that recent article in the Bergen Record defining two types of numbers that the state uses for tuition costs, and our numbers, there's a bit of a disparity between them. One is, is called the budgetary cost, the other is the total cost per pupil, but I know sometimes the tuition costs are also defined by the state. And so I think if you could just update me on that, Patrick, and my concern here is that we know exactly which number we're looking at, but also if a student were to come into this district under these terms, and that student required special education, there's nothing here in this policy talking about those costs. And I think we have to be equitable there. I'm very concerned that it's not spelled out here, whether or not those additional costs would be passed on to the parent at a 50% ratio or not. So those are some of my concerns, and we can either discuss them here, or go back to committee and look at some of those issues just a bit.
Can I ask a question now?
Uh huh.
This came from the policy committee.
Right.
The first reading, which you are a part of.
Right.
I just was curious, was the committee in favor of bringing this forward with those concerns? Was it brought up in committee?
I would say that there was a consensus, two out of three. I would say that I was in the minority on that.
Okay.
And some of these details, I think it even did come up in committee about addressing the, you know, where the child resides and the staffing, but we were looking at some other points and more concerned about that, and also looking to get clarification from the attorney on those particular other points that did come through. But now that I'm looking at this, I, I would still like to get more information. I, and some of the questions might be able to be answered tonight, but I'm, I'm looking to define this so that we don't get into a situation where it's not well-defined, and then we have somebody concerned enough to, to go to litigation or whatever, and, and I just feel like this paragraph just has to be expanded upon.
Again, I'm just making sure, this is a first reading, so it is not a policy that's going into, into policy at this point. So I think you guys said there's another meeting?
Well, if I may, if I may, further down in the policy at the end, it's kind of a catch-all, other non-domicile that catches everybody. It basically says that we reserve the right to get verification of the claims of who's, where the domicile is and affidavits of guardianship. It further indicates that we will not be responsible for transportation. It further indicates that we can deny admission where the educational program that we have is inadequate to meet a child's needs, which catches the issues related to the special ed costs. As far as the tuition itself is concerned, the annual budget program that Tom completes for the state generates a state-approved tuition, which we then give to you and you approve at a later date, and you approve it on an annual basis. So you, that's the, that's the one that we use, is the one that comes out of the budget for the approval of tuition purposes. The issue that's here is really, it's really increasing the amount that a full-time employee would be responsible for paying from 40% to 50%. We currently have on the bucks, on the books, 40%, and this is really increasing that to 50%. So I, I think most of the issues are addressed throughout the course of this, of the entire policy, as opposed to just defining non-domiciled staff members' children.
Michael?
Patrick?
Yes.
We're just modifying this, so it's been, this has been in play for a while, is that correct?
That is correct.
And how many, I mean, what is the cost, cost deficit or benefit been of these students over the last few years? Have we had people take advantage of?
Yes, we have, but there are certain, certain contracts that, that exist within the contract that prevent children from coming here, so.
Well, we're not changing it, right?
We're not changing that. As a matter of fact, we're clarifying that by saying, subject to those restrictions that are in the collective bargaining agreements. But we have had children here before, and you have had, you used to have a policy where you allowed them to attend tuition-free. That's, that was changed to 40%, and now this is upping it to 50%.
But I think, yes, my question is.
I'm sorry if I didn't answer it.
What's our experience with it? How many, you mean, we have like a half thousand kids?
No, never, never that many, no, no, never that many and never that many at one time.
So we're making money off of this?
Yes.
Anecdotally, there was a loophole in one of the contracts that was closed, that during the last period of a contract, it was addressed and has been closed, so that everybody now is consistent across the board.
Some contracts say you can't do it, right?
No, 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 no.
And some are silent.
That's not true, Roger.
We don't have consistencies, my understanding, that there are some, some staff members who are entitled to this, and there are some other staff or teachers and stuff, where it's in their contract saying that they are not entitled to it. That's correct. So, I mean, that's one of the questions I had actually coming into this, is about the uniformity, who can always deal with that as a contractual issue with the, you know, when the next time the bargaining comes up. That is correct.
There was a contract that was open that has been brought a little bit more to parity in the last round. But there are still some other contracts that haven't been opened since.
It's fair to say that there are differences in the collective bargaining agreements.
You got another question?
You know, I see what Patrick was referencing on the other non-domiciled students. I'm just not sure that affects this subclause here with children of non-domiciled staff members, and that's something I probably would like to get clarified by the attorney. And I, I think it did come up as a point in discussion, that some of the issues that we were seeing in other contracts that really defined how you look at a student as a child, a stepchild, things like that, could possibly be carried over. I can't remember if I can tell you if we had consensus on that or not, the meeting was moving so quickly, but I'd like to make sure that anything that needs to be put in here that gets, to get it well-defined is done so, and provided we have another meeting, we might be able to accomplish that before the second meeting, but I'd like to make sure that those questions do get answered.
I will just again say that after the last meeting, this policy, as well as the questions that were raised, were sent to the attorney for review. His comments, which I forwarded to the committee, are represented in this document.
Right. I, I can agree to that, these just, to me, are slightly different questions.
Which I, I understand, I just, I believe they're, they are addressed already in the policy, that it, that's already in existence, not only under the non-domicile, but below in the four catchalls that occur at the end, which includes the reserve, the fact that we reserve the right to refuse admission, or continue any admission of a non-domiciled student in the district.
Any other comments on item number 91? All right, Tom, can I get a roll call on item 91, please?
Roger?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Dot?
No, for the reasons stated.
Michael?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes. I have a motion on item number 92. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the following regulation, which is in series 5,000, which is 5132 on dress and grooming, which is a first reading. Patty? Need discussion on dress and grooming? Stephanie?
In looking at the policy, in which, I don't have any objection to what's in the policy, but it's so verbose, there are so many things that, that perhaps in the future, we could take a look at it from the other angle of what's acceptable to wear, instead of what's unacceptable to wear. Because it's just like you go through the list, and I mean, you could stand in the mirror for 20 minutes, be like yay, nay, you know, so it's just something to look at in the future, although I have no objection to what's written into the policy.
A couple things. One is the change of seat for dress, and it says, we're adding, I guess, see-through clothing, or prohibitive. See-through clothing, or clothing that reveals excess cleavage is prohibitive. And I know the Supreme Court has said in various circumstances that it knows certain things because it sees it, but it's kind of vague what excessive is in this context, and I, you know, I think it doesn't really add anything, because I won't even get into it. On the other hand, Stephanie has an interesting proposal that let's think about maybe a different way of casting it into what is permitted. On the other hand, I would propose that the policy committee actually consider going ahead and acquiring a uniform. Consider it. And I don't know if we ever have done.
I just want to see the reactions of students when you said that, that's all.
Okay, okay.
If I, if I beg for a moment, one of the issues that's come about is the fact that there is, there are communications that go from both schools to the community regarding dress, and there's the policy statement that we have on the board. These two additional statements are there to match some of the other communications that have gone out, because there was a question raised at our committee level over the fact that policy under a regulation should match our communications. This brings those two things into line. So that's why, that's the purpose for this. The purpose for this is simply to bring what's been communicated to the public vis-a-vis our communications from the schools, as well as what's on the website, to being in compliance with our regulation. Completely switching subjects, as far as uniforms is concerned, you know where I stand on that. I've made that recommendation on a number of occasions before, so I have absolutely no issue related to that. I think the issue here before you is to bring official communication and board policy regulation in line with one another. What's, what's listed here is what goes out to the public, and what has been going out to the public.
When we first, our policy group, one of the first things the superintendent, intended asked us to look at was uniforms. He was in favor of uniforms and wanted to look at uniforms. The committee as a whole had decided, let's work on, maybe we can work on the dress code and the enforcement of the dress code, so it's still, there's still those of us that would like to see a uniform. And I don't mean, you know, plaid pants and, you know, you took in khakis and whites or something like that.
My question then is, what I'm hearing you, the policy committee is not now considering, or investigating, or reviewing the subject of uniforms? Is that a correct statement?
That's a correct statement. We could always, there's never, you know, there's never a time that we can't entertain it. It's not like, you know.
Well, how, how do you go about, is a board member requesting that a committee look at something? Or can a board member do that, Joe? How does it work?
It's a discussion here. It's like we had in executive, where there's, there's a, an opinion, someone can actually make a suggestion, a suggestion that they look at it, because, you know.
We need it in another, hopefully in another week or two, so maybe we'll, we'll have another discussion about that. Uniforms.
And there's one last, last comment. I, I know the idea is to sync the disclosure that goes out to the parents with our policies, and therefore we're changing our policy. We're adding something to it. All right. Usually it goes, regularly, usually it goes the other way around, where the policies drive what goes out to the public. Both of them are happening. And I just follow up, once again, is I, I think it's too vague, this, this excess cleavage suggestion, so no, I'm just going to vote against that because of that.
No, I just, I think it might be kind of interesting, because this, this did come up quite a bit in policy, and we did talk early on about, you know, Patrick's recommendation for the uniforms and whatnot. We were kind of trying to get some more feedback as to enforcement, and what's happening in the school, and how it's handled, and, you know, what the types of incidents are, but basically, if there is a survey going out, could this topic maybe be added to that survey?
I think it would need a separate survey.
Or a separate survey, maybe, of the summer or something, but.
Well, I'm going to say a shoe this year, I don't want to speak for fall. I would say no, because we lose focus. We need to be narrow in what we're asking.
But I would like some.
First one was broader.
Well, you know what, we have a town hall meeting here, then you can.
Maybe someone will ask.
But maybe in the future, we could, you could put that on your list of foreseeable projects, maybe, to get some more public input on that topic.
Any other comments on item number 92? Tom, roll call, please. Roger?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Michael?
No.
Vito?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes. I have a motion on item number 1011 that was pulled.
So who?
Patty. Dot, I would ask, since you pulled it, I would think you have a comment?
My concern has to do with really the fund end of this project. As I think Vito alluded to in his summary of our campus facilities meeting, I've been very concerned about making sure there would be some funds available to set aside in an emergency reserve. And, and the funds in particular that I'm talking about is the money that was derived in excess of the 2% tax levy for this school year, the 11, 12 school year. It's about $145,000, $146,000. And that money was taken really to anticipate healthcare costs. It turns out we didn't need it. And I'd like to set it aside in an emergency reserve. I, I think we took it from the, the public in, under the, under the guise of needing it for healthcare costs. If we put it aside for healthcare, or put it aside in an emergency reserve, we could use it for future healthcare costs. We've already transferred hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the healthcare line item for other projects. I'm not in favor of, of necessarily spending those funds, so I guess the question I have is, are those funds available to us if this project is approved tonight, so that we can authorize something, whether it is the emergency reserve, or another type of reserve, or eventually taxpayer relief? I just need to know where we stand on the funding, so that's my question.
The question really is, at the conclusion of the school year, which is about 30 days away, can you give a better answer? But at this point in time, we do have the money to go forward with this project. Okay?
But that doesn't answer my question, because basically, if, if this is approved tonight, and that money, therefore, that I'm saying we took in terms of healthcare costs, if it's become spent, I can't advocate that it be reserved for the public, and I, I'm having a problem. And I, I'm having a problem with not knowing the answer to that question.
Well, this project needs to go forward because of what we talked about in the campus facilities committee, passed two or three times.
Right.
Isn't that so?
But we, we have talked about it, and what would be the detriment if we waited to take the funding out of the July one budget?
Well, big, big time. One, the project probably will not get completed until, until after school starts, which can't be.
That's a possibility, I recognize that.
A very, very strong possibility. And we have the money this year in which to do this project.
Right, but we took a lot of money from the taxpayers for healthcare. We used a lot of that money already for construction purposes. Essentially, what we're saying is, we went over the two percent tax levy last year, we don't know exactly where we are, and we may be spending it tonight on this, and, and I don't know.
Okay, I don't agree with that theory, but overall, what hindsight tells us is that, yes, we did not need it for this school year, but when the budget was put together, it was anticipated that we would be using it.
Right, but now you're asking me to maybe spend it, and I'm not sure I want to do that.
Well, we did discuss that not all the money is coming, where the money was coming from to fund this project. It wasn't just healthcare costs.
Right, but we've used that healthcare line item for many other projects this year, probably up to about roughly, say, four hundred thousand. And I, I just can't, I understand the need for this, I understand the need to complete this project on time, but I also know we went over the two percent tax levy from the public for healthcare, and I'd like to see us put this money aside. If, if we were to set up an emergency reserve, I see the benefits, we may not have to cap bank in the future. I'm just concerned that, I have no projections to go on as to the funding here.
Michael? Tom, do you have any projection, Barbara Ward, you know, where we're gonna be at on June thirtieth, insofar as how much, I mean, because we're talking here, it's about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, a hundred, you know, do we have that money now, set aside? I mean, do you know where that's, where it's coming from?
For this project?
For this project?
Yes.
Okay. So that's already taken care of. And now, you know what our general expenses are going forward, I mean, it's, we only have, you know, four more weeks.
Right.
Okay. Do you have an estimate in your mind as to where we're gonna be on June thirtieth? Are we gonna have another hundred, are we gonna have a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty thousand left over for our budget, unallocated?
I can see having a hundred and forty thousand dollars, sure.
Okay. And that, that's a possibility or a probability?
It's a possibility, yes.
Okay. That would be unallocated at that point, and therefore suitable for a discussion as to where to allocate it?
Yes.
Well, it's a possibility, it's not a guarantee. I got it.
Staff and tasks.
Got it.
Any other discussion on item number ten eleven? Roll call, please, Tom.
Roger? Stephanie?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Dot?
I think I need a little bit more of a projection than that. No.
Michael?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Seven one.
Okay, I'm sorry. May forgive me, I take my notes here, make sure we got everything. At this point, I'd like to actually take a step back for the presentation. May forgive me for, make sure I pronounce it, Dr. Roshong?
Yep.
Before we have the other, other items, so.
Patrick?
Dr. Roshong, if you'd like to come forward. We're gonna have a presentation of the Eisenhower Leadership Award, and you're bringing our fine young student, who is the recipient of the award. If you wouldn't mind just standing at the microphone so that everybody can hear you when it goes out over the airwaves, would you like to?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you very much for inviting me here. I am Brian Roshong, a graduate of the United States Military Academy, class of nineteen sixty-six, and a member of the West Point Society of New Jersey. Each year, the West Point Society of New Jersey honors selected juniors who meet certain criteria of leadership, community service, and outstanding citizenship. This year, Riverdale has selected Andrew Yim, and on behalf of the West Point Society of New Jersey, I would like to present him with the Eisenhower Leadership Award. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
It's our pleasure. We were, we had, next meeting, which is June eighteenth, we will have some of our staff recognition awards, as well as a couple of other awards for our students. And in the previous two meetings, we had representatives from the middle school here talking about student achievement, and high school here talking about student achievement. Unfortunately, we were unable to schedule Andrew and Dr. Roshong to be here on those meetings, which is why we had a special presentation this evening for that award. So I'd like to thank Dr. Roshong for coming out, making the time to be here, to make the award this evening. Thank you very much. And congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, too, I, well, because we kind of mix them all together, items for board discussion, decision, old business, new business? Dot?
I just briefly, the organic chemistry, not to delay the town hall meeting, but I, I guess the point I'd like to make about the organic chemistry class is that when students were here presenting at our previous meeting, one of the students came forward and kind of was questioning what they would have to give up in terms of their scheduling in order to fit this in. At the time, we didn't know where the conflicts were, and Mr. Fletcher was able to provide us with an analysis as to the potential scheduling conflicts. But the missing component of data is, given the conflicts that exist, what would the students select? Do we have, say, eight, nine, or ten students who might still want this class? And I guess we could go two ways. We could either put forth a tentative motion, if we got a certain number, go forward, or maybe we could just table this to the June eighteenth meeting in order to get that data. But the problem isn't just the conflicts and the periods and the scheduling. I mean, I understand it and I see it. The problem is, is given that information, do we still have eight, nine, or ten students who want this class? And, and I don't think we have the answer to that question yet. So that data component is missing. I'd like to wait until we get that preferentially. In other words, there's a recommendation not to offer this class.
Right, a second, a second time, because it was recommended not to, to run the class because of, because it fell under the number of students that we did, that we have as a minimum to run a class, which are numerous classes that we aren't running.
Wait, let's just be crystal clear about it. The high school administration and the superintendent of schools, in the, developing the master schedule and going through the student schedules, had a whole slew of courses that were below enrollment levels, which we indicated would not run. When the students became aware of it, they came to the Board of Education, they also, and I applaud them for it, came to see us, meaning Ms. Brooks and I, we met with several of the students, not all of them, but several of them, with most of them, I should say. And then, based upon that discussion, the students came to the board. This is a board issue that was raised. The, the board is determining whether or not they want to do this. Our recommendation, as, as with a whole slew of other courses, it has been consistent. And we didn't recommend anything to the board, we didn't recommend anything, anything one way or the other to the board. The students came forward to the board, and the board chose to intervene in the matter.
Well, I did look up the policy and regulation we have on this, just so that I understood it, and it is true what Mr. Fletcher is saying, this does now come to the board because the students have brought it here, and that there are parameters. And it, and it talks here about high school parameters, and for a terminal course or a last-in-sequence course, which would be something like an AP course, but also in my mind, this organic chemistry is that terminal course. It's the highest level or the most, it falls in a sequence where this would be at the end of a student's field of study of our chemistry sequence here at Riverdale. Of course, at college, they'd go on, but this is probably one of the last classes you would take here in the chemistry sequence. And the board can make a decision when there are less than ten students who could be in this class. And we could maybe go with a recommendation if during one of the periods, eight students come forward, or nine, or whatever that magic number is, we can put that forth, and if the enrollment shows itself to be that, then fine. I, the problem is, is that I don't know what the students want. I know where the conflicts are now. The missing data component is what would the students select? So if, as Mr. Fletcher said, in period five, there are currently six students who could take the organic chemistry class, are there two or three more that when they have to make their schedules out, would opt to take organic chemistry over the other classes that are being offered at that time? Maybe this would have enough students for this board to approve it and have that class run.
What I heard on those, really has the numbers that could be offered in each period? Was that, correct me if I'm wrong, if I heard incorrectly, was that the other courses that they had, why there was conflict, why there's six in, in that period, two in one, four in the other, is that they had classes that were core, core classes that they needed to take. So those other two or three or four wouldn't have that option anyway.
Well, I don't think AP English is a requirement to graduate, nor is honors physics.
Well, it's only what I, what my interpretation, my opinion, that's what I.
I mean, certainly, they probably have to take an English class or something like that every year, but they, it doesn't have to be AP English, so there might be other electives. Can we either, as a board, agree to wait till we get more data, or do you want to just set a number tonight and, and go forth? And that's.
Well, I think there has to be a resolution.
Okay, I will make a motion that this class would run, provided there's eight students that come forward to take the class. And I think eight is a sufficient number. We've run other programs, not necessarily academic programs, but I know in the past we've run other types of offerings at the school with eight.
Can I ask you, let's be concise with these, there's some opinion in there with the motion, so we'll just, concise, just to make sure.
A motion to run this class, provided the enrollment is eight or better.
Eight students or better. Do I have a second? Okay, any further discussion? Michael?
Patrick, how much would, question I always ask, how much would it, would it cost? I mean, I know it's, it's below the rec, the recommended number, and the one set forth generally for holding a class, but how much would it cost?
It's twenty percent of the salary of the only teacher who's available to teach the class.
And that would be about how much, or are we not allowed to say that out loud?
Well.
We talked about like, hey, the ground figure?
Yeah.
Under twenty?
Twenty.
Okay.
So twenty thousand dollars for eight students. I, I, I consider that equitable, and we've had other programs costing the district about that much for eight students.
Is there any other discussion?
And I, I think, too, we're looking at all kinds of things tonight. We, we just talked about a policy where we'd be offering benefits to non-residents. These are our resident students, and possibly more might come in from outside who want to take this course. I think this is, our students trying to achieve their best selves in terms of their career interests and their academic aspirations, and I'd like to give them the opportunity if they can get eight or better together to do so.
The only caveat I want to make is, it is your opinion that it's a terminal course. When we came to you, we recommended this as an elective, we did not indicate that this was a terminal course at the end of the, of a cycle of classes. There are other science electives that have been offered, that are new this year that are running, and this one was new last year, and it had a sufficient enrollment, it does it this time, in, in my opinion. I, I do, I don't, I do not believe this should be in any way, shape, or form viewed as a terminal course with the equivalent weight of an AP class or a final honors in a sequence.
I mean, I guess that's how you look at it, because AP classes are also electives, people choose them, they're not a requirement necessarily to graduate. I did pull the description for the course when we, when we first introduced it, the proposal that was put forth about a year or so ago, and it clearly says that this is to be taken after honors chemistry and concurrently with or after AP chemistry or AP biology. So maybe terminal is semantics, but it clearly is an upper-level type of elective like an AP course.
And my last comment is, I think where we as a school district have the capability of offering our students really advanced courses, something to make this experience here outstanding from an academic point of view, things that aren't normally offered at a lot of other places, I think we should try, when we can, take the extra yard, go with it, and say, hey, look, we don't normally do it, we don't intend to make a habit out of this, but where we can, in exceptional circumstances, here we have a group of seniors, I believe, you know, and they're not gonna have a chance to it later, that we should try and do our best, especially when it relates, in my mind, to the sciences and technology and stuff like that, that we as a nation need to have people who are trained in.
Comments on the motion? All right, Tom, can I get a roll call on the motion to have the organic chemistry class run as long as there are eight students or better?
Roger?
Should I make my comment? I apologize, but this is now the second year that we're reviewing courses, and, you know, of all things, the two years have been math and science, which I'm all about, but I am concerned that this is becoming a habit. You know, as what Michael said, I don't want this to become a habit. You know, unfortunately, students self-select their classes, and we have to draw the line somewhere in the sand, and, you know, with that, I've gotta say no this time. And, you know, I hate to take a class out of students' hands, I just, I can't, we can't do this every year.
I've said it at meetings before, I think we are making a value judgment on what we think is important, as opposed to what the student body thinks is important. When you looked at the list of classes that aren't running, I think it's a sin, we're not running French, one and two. I mean, you know, so I'm along with Roger now.
Patty?
I also feel eight's a very low number for a class. I know this has a lab component, but maybe it speaks to some kind of online piece, if that's a possibility, I don't know if it is or not, so no.
Claudia? Dot?
I am all for student achievement. Eight is sufficient. It was sufficient when we wanted to spend over twenty thousand a year, dollars a year the last two years for eight students in our varsity hockey program. This is ridiculous. I can't believe that we cannot.
There's more than eight students, Dot.
There were eight varsity students, ten eleven and nine ten, for hockey, and it cost this district more than twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Vito? No. Joe?
No, I have to applaud the students for coming out and, and asking for certain things in all two, but like you said, I think we're setting a precedent by every time somebody wants something, there's choices that have to be made. Unfortunately, you need to have, you know, a majority. You gotta, they've given an opportunity to bring some other kids in, unfortunately, it didn't happen, and it's gonna be a struggle, so again, my vote is no.
Any other old business, new business? Oh, Stephanie?
It's, it's come up sort of in ancillary conversations just with people, but there was an article written about Ridgewood doing a, a late day. And although I'm not proposing to do a late day, I would like to look into next year doing an unplugged day, and maybe more than one. And an unplugged day is, you know, a regular school day, but the community and the students are unplugged, there's no iPods, we're not using our laptops, we're not, you know, going home and watching TV, we're just spending, you know, the, the, the old-fashioned, you know, teaching, it'd be great if people, you know, did educational games or whatever. It's a, it's a day in which we, you know, kind of revert back to the no-technology, just to see what it, what it's like and, and the benefits of that. So it's, you know, something that certainly has to be looked out in the schedule, but it's something that would be great for us to do.
So the rooster will come wake everybody up?
That would be great. That would be great. No, it's just you, Joe.
Any other, Roger?
Yeah, we talked about it earlier in the meeting, and I think we're really missing out on an opportunity in going out to the public to ask for comments when we're going out with a survey. And from the opinions and from the comments, it looks like most people seem to think that we should be getting some verbatim. And if worthy of a motion, I'll put it out there, unless we can stress to the committee that, you know, the majority of the board would like to see it. So I don't know if I want to get a straw vote, you know, before there's a motion out there, but I do think that that survey, what?
It's unfair without Paul, yes, would you want, he's the chair of the committee.
But you know something, the comment was made the last time, and there was a strong opinion about it, and I can't control Paul not being here, just when I'm not here. So, what?
Is it okay?
So I'm going to throw a motion out there that the surveys that go out need to include some open comments, you know, for the public to put verbatim in there. It's just an opportunity to gain data, whether the data is useful or not, you know, is to be determined by the survey. But I do think that, you know, if you want to gain value in asking for opinions, you know, at least you can ask and receive the data. What you do with it after the fact is a separate discussion. But you miss an opportunity to retrieve the data, which you have very few opportunities to get. So that being said, I'd put a motion out there that we have open-ended questions on the survey that is intended to go out.
I will second that. Comments? Yeah, I mean, I think it's really important, and I've said it several times here, that we engage the public, not just say, answer these following questions. It's part of our guidelines here. We're supposed to have a partnership with the community, and I think one way of doing that, and we do have, and we do, and I think it's wonderful that we do have the emails to the board, however, those go directly to the superintendent, and the superintendent is an authority figure here, and sometimes, for some reason, I've heard parents say things that, wow, something this, this, or that, and I say, go speak to the superintendent. And for whatever reason, because they're concerned about authority or not, they don't do it. And I think this way of getting some type of comment that doesn't go directly to the superintendent, to the authorities here, and it's something that we can look at. And so I would second that on a half second.
I'd like to make a comment on that.
Then too, as well, I'm all for open comments, but if you're going to put it on a survey, it's pretty easy to be that unnamed source, if you will, in all two. It doesn't have to, you could come back, it really should be. Any survey that I've taken where there's open comments, you know, I'd say 90% of them are something that, you know what, they send out to me, they've got my email address, they know who I am, there's an IP address in all two, so that I can't answer the question 15 times, saying, you know what, Joe Manzelli's a bum, Joe Manzelli's a bum, kind of thing, that you should have some sort of accountability for your comments. That's just, again, my two cents, like, you know, I've had issues, I've brought it to Mr. Fletcher, not as a school board member, as a person of the school district, if you will. I always found him accommodating, so I just, like, my personal opinion is, if you're going to make a comment, that you should be able to stand behind it and have some accountability.
That was not negative, I just wanted, there's nothing negative I was saying about Patrick, it's just, he's, it's just his position that he's holding. Patrick responds properly and does everything fine, it's just there just seems to be that, in my mind, there are some people who are hesitant to enter into communication with our figures.
I understand, in my opinion, and that is, yes, I can understand that. You know what, you tell, I got my daughter sitting over there, tell her, you know what, you got a problem with your coach, you got a problem with your teacher, you should go to them and speak to them, not go around sending out an email or different things around, trying to make sure you're kind of working around it, is you should face things head-on. And that's just, again, one person's opinion, that if you're going to make a comment about something, stand up and say it. So that's just my own opinion on a survey with open comments, is make sure that there is some sort of accountability.
Roger, you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, you might hear nine out of 10 surveys say, Joe Manzelli's a bum, but the 10th comment that comes in that says, oh, the position as board president is in a difficult situation because he has to mediate various things, and, you know, had he done this, or she done that, you get some value insight. And, you know, I said outright, you know, the value of the data that you receive is based on what you do with it, and one idea that comes out of any verbatim can take you one step further. I mean, this is what I do for a living every day, when I put an ad out there for a client, or whatever it is, we're always soliciting feedback. Nine out of 10 times, it's crap, what you get. But the one time that you get something valuable makes the next one significantly more important. And, you know, it's that constructive criticism, as opposed to criticism, that makes it better going forward.
But then I guess the question then becomes, is, Stephanie made a comment before about a value judgment, how do we value, you know, suppose there's only five, and there's four that are constructive, who is to say?
At least you have that data to make the decision.
I'm not arguing, I'm just-
Without putting it out there, you don't even have the data to even make a decision.
All I'm saying, I'm just saying, I agree with it, open comments are great, but all I'm, my personal opinion is, there should be some accountability. That's all, that's my only comment, not saying that you should or should not have them, if you're going to have them, though, there should be accountability. We ask people to stand up here and identify themselves, not just come up and, you know, hide behind a blue screen.
I'd rather, so my point just being, I'd rather have the ability to have the data than to not even have it. But, okay, let's go.
All right, any other comments?
The committee recommendation is not to have.
I can't speak for myself on the committee, but I feel, the same comment I had last time is the comment I have this time, that when we do this, we're trying to look for a trend. And when you have, when you have, you know, several hundred people respond, and maybe you have 200 comments, you're synthesizing that information instead of the information that we were trying to access from the survey. So I just think it draws the attention away from what we're trying to garner in that, not that I don't think it's valuable and that there isn't a diamond in the rough, but I think it just takes, it takes away from what we're trying to access from the survey. That's my, that's my personal, as I said on the committee, my objection to the comment box, is that then we're spending all this time, and there could be 150 different comments, and maybe two repeat themselves, you know, meaning like, one, two, not like, there's 150, and then there's 150 of the same ones. And so then, like, where are we going with that information? The information we wanted was in the questions that we asked.
So having an open-ended question in the survey could actually achieve the opposite and kind of push the public further out and away from us, because we do have available venues for people to express their feelings about what we're doing and what we're not doing.
You know, we have 20 venues a year for people to express their opinion, and we get two people come to the audience tonight being the exception. I'm just saying, you have an opportunity to collect data. What we do with it after the fact is completely irrelevant, but you're reaching out, and you have only so many times to touch the public, and that is one of the opportunities that we have to touch the public and to actually get feedback.
But as a board, historically, we've always shunned away from accepting anonymous comments. We have.
As a board, we do it every time, when we review our own board and we review the superintendent. We give ratings, and then there's open-ended questions. Now, whether or not you know who the questions are answered by is irrelevant, the point is, is there's the opportunity, and very often, it's constructive feedback, and Patrick can take it and use it and disseminate the information himself as he feels relevant. But it's his decision, and frankly, then, the data is presented to him. Without the open-ended comments, he doesn't even have the opportunity to do it on those surveys. All I'm saying is, you have an opportunity to collect, and you can choose to not use it or not use it, period. All I'm saying is, there's an opportunity, let's not forsake it.
Sure. Play one.
Stephanie, if you think it's going to, I think your argument is, it might be a distraction, being a lot of noise from, a lot of comments that are disparate and hard to organize and stuff, and that would lead away from the purposes of the particular survey. My suggestion to you in that part might be, why not take, your survey's going out, you're going to have to minister it, or do whatever has to be done, ask the open-ended question, and give it, I would volunteer, I bet Roger would volunteer, we'll go and we'll review and summarize the results. You won't have to do it, it won't be distracting. If it's, if your point is that it's distracting from what you're doing-
I don't think you're saying her, the committee would have to do that.
Yeah.
I'm not looking forward to people, I just, I don't think it's her personally, but-
I'm not saying her personally, I mean the committee.
I think we're underestimating the types of parents, students, and teachers that took the time to respond to our survey in the first place, and who most likely will respond again. And I think they're not trying necessarily to hide behind anything. I think they have very legitimate concerns, they do come forth and voice themselves, I mean, we have a number of people here tonight for the town hall meeting, they do send in periodically messages through our board website, but sometimes, I think we really do need this data that Roger and Michael are talking about. For example, in our last survey, there was a question to the parents, that does the school clearly communicate its expectations for its child? Numbers weren't as high as I would have expected for either strongly agree or just agree. Then the same question was asked again, the school has high expectations for all students of the teachers, and again, the numbers weren't as high, and I don't know why. And again, it's a personal observation, I don't know what the number should be, I'm just saying it's lower than I expected, and I'd like to know why. And there might be reasons, there might be very legitimate, concrete reasons, and I think in order to do what we've talked about, taking the school from good to great and making this a premier district, we need to know that information, and I'd like to support Roger and Michael in-
Is there a motion? I know, I was just going to say, can we vote?
Vote on it.
But we're repeating the same discussion over and over and over again.
The procedure would be the call to vote. People can have the discussion. Quite honestly, I was hoping we'd actually have the town hall to listen to what people had to say, but any other discussion? Then, Tom, can I get a roll call on the motion to include open comments in all surveys sent out by the board? Roger? Yes. Stephanie?
No.
Patty?
Not at this time, no.
Claudia?
No.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vito?
No, I believe the issue needs to be discussed at committee level, and then brought back to the board.
Joe?
I agree with Vito, I think it still should be at the committee level. We operate in committees, it's a reason we have the committees, and if you really want to do that, you make a motion to absolve all committees and have everything open-ended, so I'm voting no right now.
Just make one comment, please, if you don't mind, and I don't want to go against our norms, but you know how I feel about those. Twice now, we have asked the committee to go back, and, you know, Vito's comment and your comment about it going to committee and having the committee vet it out, has come back with the same thing. So it has gone to the committee, and the committee has continued to make recommendations. I'm just making a comment. So it has now happened twice in a row, and you're definitely entitled to vote no, and I have no issues with that, because that's why there's people sitting around the table, but it has gone to the committee. And that's just my comment, and it can end at that, I think it's time for the public to talk.
Okay, and had I voted yes, then it would have been a tie, and we would have had to do this all over again with Paul present, so pardon.
We would have been absolutely fine in that case, but, you know, my trick point being is, I think the committee has vetted it, and they have given their opinion by not including it on a second survey.
We have a disagreement, so I'd be, life goes on.
Are there any other old business to discuss right now? With that-
Motion to go to open house?
No, there is no motion, it's the agenda item at this point now, is, we're going to go into our town hall meeting that we're calling here, and what we would ask is, everybody, if you come to the microphone, identify yourself, you know, which town you live in, not that that really matters, but we have it, just name an address, kind of in all the meetings. I would suggest that you try to keep it to three minutes, and then we can have some comments, and then allow others, since there are people here, and allow people to also to make their comments, and we can always come back to things. Keep in mind, though, I'm going to say the ground rules, if you will, there are certain things that we cannot discuss, even out in open, like contracts, teacher evaluations, some of the things like that nature, but we are, that our intent here is to get some feedback from the public on some things, if you think that this school board in this district could either do better, or other suggestions. So with that, anybody who wants to come to the microphone, identify yourself, and we're here, we're ready. And keep in mind that you, you know, again, you are on film, on camera, and it will be, like, on Thursdays, school board meetings are replayed, so with that, anyone want to go first? Want to go first? No? Keep your mouth shut, Jean? All right, Annie?
Bill Daley, 300 Monroe Avenue in River Ridge, I'm assuming I can ask you folks questions, right?
Yep.
Okay. This is with regards to the organic chemistry course, and I commend the board members that support it, thank you very much. If not for the conflicts, would this course be over this year? And didn't you have conflicts last year with the scheduling of this course, and if so, how was that handled?
No, we would, this year, we recommended not to run it from the beginning. The only reason this investigation went further is because students came to the board, the board asked for further information. The course had sufficient enrollment last year to run, this year, I should say, this year to run, which is the first year of its enrollment.
Pat, what is sufficient enrollment?
I think there was 13 in the class this year.
And what is sufficient enrollment? Is there a number, is it eight, is it nine, is it 10?
It's 15, it's between 10 and 15.
Okay. Are there not classes now that are being run that are less than 10?
There's one class, it's the same thing as it happened last year. I'm excluding special education and specialized programming in my comment.
Right.
There's one class now that's running at nine students.
And how did that get through?
Same thing as it happened last, same thing that happened here, there were 10 students enrolling in, trying to enroll in BC calculus, pre-calculus last year, and the board made a motion to run the class, and its extension is AP calculus BC, which has nine students enrolled as of today.
Okay. You had said the decision was made not to run this class again this year, and then the students approached you?
We, this year, this year-
Yeah, this year, right.
Right, for organic chemistry.
Yeah, now, why was that decision made?
Because we only had 10 students enrolled in it. We only had 10 students who chose to enroll in it.
Okay. And 10 is, I guess what I'm having a tough time, and I go back to your mission statement, I'm sure everyone has referred you, that to challenge each student, okay, each student, even if it is 10. To nurture every student, again, even if it is only 10. So I'm very disappointed that the board is not moving forward with this. It is a cutting-edge program, I've talked to other schools, to offer this is commendable, disappointing that it's not being offered, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Yulit Saser, I'm from River Ridge, Voorhees Avenue. Also, very disappointed, like the other parent is, in regards to organic chemistry. I don't, quite a few things that I don't understand is that we are so blessed that we have Ms. Jay here in this school. Her team, for the second year in a row, her Olympic chemistry team, which you all are very aware of, won first place in the state. We are blessed with this teacher, and I have a feeling that not that many of us, of the board members here, are willing to let her teach these eight, nine, or 10 students that really, really want this. Organic chemistry is the number one reason that kids don't get into medical school. If they're pre-exposed to it, they- If they're pre-exposed to it, they have, they're gonna be prepared and ready for it. These children came to you and told you that they want this class. This is not spending twenty thousand dollars on a sport, this is spending twenty thousand dollars, or eighteen, or whatever it is, on the education of our kids. And I, I really, I find it so hard to believe that you cannot, please reconsider, speak to them. They, I, I am a hundred percent sure that they will move their schedules around, they will choose this class above whatever they are right now, wherever they got put, or whatever they chose before this got into conflict. If you can please give them a, a chance to, to try to resolve this conflict and, and be taught this amazing class that I am a hundred percent sure is gonna help them in their future. They're looking to go into med school, into biomedicine, into all these hard science core classes. I'm just so upset that, please, can you put more consideration into this? We're in, in an amazing school. And, and this is an A.P. class, this is, or I'm, if you can please let them talk, there's quite a few of us here that came for the same reason, including our students. Thank you very much.
While they argue, I'll get up. Lori Winters, I live at 258 Maple Ave in Oradell. I'm the parent who came last year, one of them, and really complained about the math, and I thank you again for offering that pre-calc B.C. math section, because it has made a tremendous difference for my daughter. She has grown tremendously as a math matician. She is one of the students who wants to be in the organic chem class, she is in A.P. chem right now, and doing really well. And I happen to agree with Ms. Duran, and I appreciate all the support that you've given. You've given hope to these kids. They're extremely passionate about school. They come here because they want to become academically enriched, to be the absolute best that they can be. This isn't asking money for a sport. I have a son who's a professional athlete, so I understand the significance of athletics. He was an athlete here at Riverdale. But this is about academics. And these kids have done some research, and from what I'm hearing from them, is they looked back at kids from Riverdale who have gotten into Ivy League schools. Those children have had organic chemistry. So it's very, very competitive getting into these schools. These kids wanna go further academically, as board members, as administrators. In a sense, you are educators. And you really owe it to the kids to support their academic dreams. I don't know where we would be as a society if there weren't people who supported the passion that learners had for science, for math, for technology. We wouldn't have, I don't know, we wouldn't have Einstein, we wouldn't have Galileo, we wouldn't have Isaac Newton, we wouldn't have these future people that can bring so much to our society, to enrich society. And by shutting down their passion and their desire to learn, you're turning off a switch and saying to kids, you know what? Education, learning, it's really not that important. And I really wish you would reconsider, because these kids are the absolute future of this country. And as educators, it's your job to push them to be their academic best, not say it's too much money. Thank you.
I'm Anthony Sair, member of the A.P. chem class, and this is John. And basically, I mean, we've been pushing for this organic chem class to run since the beginning, and just my take on it is, we shouldn't be having to push you to run a class, you should be pushing us to take the, you know, highest classes there are to take. It, it shouldn't be us that come up to you guys, you know, pleading for a class, you guys should be encouraging us to do what we wanna do. That's just a point I, I wanted to make.
I mean, it even says in the mission statement, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, and we feel very strongly that this class is challenging us to our absolute highest potential. And it's, the way I see it, it's very rare that you have students asking to learn. Like, as sad as it is in society today, students aren't concerned about education and learning as much as they used to be. Like, usually now it's sports are going out and having fun and following celebrities and stuff, but actually wanting to learn about science and technology, which our nation is concerned about today, because apparently we're falling behind.
We are behind.
Yeah, we're behind.
Greatly.
Like, other nations are increasing their science and math classes so they can become ahead, and if we wanna get back ahead, it really all starts in high school where we develop a love of learning of these subjects.
I mean, just, just, when I started, before A.P. chem, I took honors chem, and going into honors chem, I thought I'd hate it, you know? I wasn't that much into it, it wasn't really my thing. I was more of a history and English guy, but with the help of Ms. Jakobis and through the last two years of chemistry, I can't imagine doing anything else for, in, in college and the rest of my life. I mean, it's, I've developed a passion for it, and I wanna continue it.
And Ms. Jakobis, who is basically teaches the A.P. chemistry class and honors chemistry classes, she's a phenomenal asset to our school. I mean, she has inspired so many kids to love chemistry, and honestly, like, people are so surprised when they find out how many seniors are majoring in some kind of chemical engineering, or just engineering or math field, and a lot of them are inspired by her.
Just because of her.
I know I was, and you were too.
She really, like, I know this doesn't have as much to do, but she doesn't receive the credit she deserves. She puts in two hundred percent into what she does, and that really has an effect on how we see science and chemistry, and, yeah.
Basically, like, she's a phenomenal asset to our school, and it'd be a shame not to use her to her best potential, so we can be driven to our best potential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other, some comments or suggestions?
Michael?
No, this is a town hall thing, so I'm gonna just say, I'd like to throw out a couple of words, and if anybody has any strong feeling about it, welcome to, to inform us, enlighten us, or just to talk. Some of the topics that have been discussed over the past year are things like tutors, laptops, but it's brought up uniforms today. If anybody has any comments, or any of those, or anything else, basically, we are offering this as a way to enhance communication between the population and the board, okay? It's the first time it's ever been done. If we don't get very many questions, I doubt if there'll be, you know, another one so soon. So, that being said, I'll, bye.
Hi, good, uh, good evening. My name is Michelle Browning, 232 John Street. First of all, I just wanna thank the board for all their hard work this year, and all the time and effort that you've put in, we really do appreciate it. But as far as one comment I have, I just wondered if the, um, the, I can't think of the word, I'm sorry, the guidance counselors, if they could ask the students during their sessions, maybe what they would like to do when they grow up? That's a comment that I don't hear very often from my two students, from, from the guidance counselors. Do they ask you, do you have any aspirations right now to go into medicine, to go into the sciences, to go into math? Because maybe those comments from the guidance counselors could be fielded to the board as to what the majority or, or what classes might be necessary to help these students reach their aspirations. So I just feel like that's not being done, and things are getting lost in the shuffle. So that's one comment. And my son, who has been having a lot of trouble in math throughout, we recently got a tutor who graduated MIT, and now his grades are up to ninety-five. So I'm really sad that it took me a lot of research to find this tutor, to now get him up to this status, and it's kind of been very difficult for him, and caused him not to get into chemistry, even though he had the highest grade in honors biology last year. So, you know, the fact that the sciences and the math are kind of put together without really letting the parents know that from the beginning, that this could affect their, their, their term, in terms of the rest of their classes, is something I think that needs to be re-looked at. Thank you so much.
Beth Schuler, seventy-seven Beverly Road, Oradell. I'm also inquiring about a certain class, not organic chemistry, but my son has a very desire to learn more about economics, and he signed up for the super economics, because there was no other economics class offered. And because he has a desire to study that in college, he's a junior now, I figured, okay, it's worth, probably worth spending the, the money for the super class, it's a half-year class, only to find out, I guess due to limited interest, and I don't know how many kids expressed interest, that it wasn't gonna be offered. So he met with his guidance counselor and chose something else. But now that I'm listening to about the organic chemistry, I think, again, I'm wondering why there is no other economic class offered in the curriculum? Because he took all the business courses, he's done very well. And economics, although it's not under the business, it kind of falls into that, it also falls into social sciences, which he has an aspiration for as well, political science specifically. So I'm just wondering if there's any particular consideration of maybe offering an economics class in the future? Because, again, there are kids that have an interest that is a good way to challenge. In fact, he's gone ahead on his own and bought a book on economics on base, very basic level, because he still has this desire and he wants to learn more about it. And I, I applaud him for that, but I kind of feel bad that now the opportunity to study something that, I don't know how many other kids are interested in it, but again, should it always be based on how many kids are interested, or can it be even offered as a, a, a different type of elective, like the other business courses? Thank you.
I'm just trying to know that, is there, how, how do courses get, like, exist non-mainstream courses, I'll say, like economics, how do they get chosen here and offered? Why, why are certain courses offered and why aren't others? Why is the economic supra offered and not a non-supra economics course? Just in general, my, my question.
We're, we've, we have a junior MBA program here, which has had, and we've only had one business teacher, basically, in the program. We just hired another teacher. This is the first year of the additional business teacher, and I recommended that we increase the offerings for next year. There's, we're adding a point five in business, if you will, business slash law. So I suspect that there will be something coming down the pike, it's just not there right now.
So we didn't have the, the teacher, the teacher at this point?
Well, at one point, we didn't have, we didn't near have capacity to do it, no.
By capacity numbers, stu-, uh.
Staff, staff.
And do we, we have it now, or?
Well, we're getting, we're getting there.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I've been, sorry, Christine Robertson, First Street in Oradell. I've been at these meetings in prior years where we've had budget issues, and thankfully, this year we didn't seem to have that. And I've heard parents and, and, and the board talk about students that we lose to Bergen Academies. And I wonder if canceling classes like organic chemistry will just cause that to happen more often. So, you know, the cost involved, maybe you can say it's twenty percent, but what are we losing on the other side? So my real question, I came up to ask about the uniforms. Are you considering a uniform policy because the dress code is not being followed? Is that why? Or why are you considering a uniform policy?
I think, my good, because some people prefer it, so it was discussed.
You prefer it?
Some people.
Okay, so, can I ask why you prefer it? If it's just you think it looks good, or? Because I can tell you that I have a student in this school, and every day I come and drop him off and pick him up, and I see kids in flip-flops and not following the policy, but why don't we just enforce it? Send them home! Within a week, it will be over, because after you send that kid home for a week, every day, I think they'll start dressing the way they're supposed to dress. Don't punish the kids who are fol- following the policy because of the kids who aren't. So I'm totally opposed to a uniform. I would be very upset to hear that we have to wear one. And I, if it's because people are not conforming to the policy, then send them home!
I'd like to say something, because I brought up the uniform today. Quite honestly, I think there's a lot of peer pressure out there, and a lot of the outside environment on TV and whatnot that's influencing the way and number of kids, a lot of kids are dressing these days.
Of course.
And I think, and I really think that the parents are pushed all, I'm a parent of a sixteen or fourteen-year-old, I'm pushed all the time on what to wear, and what is appropriate or not. And what I see out in the streets right now, I'm not very happy with. I'm not saying the school, I'm saying in the streets. And I think that one way of addressing, in my mind, peer pressure, is to have a uniform. Do I want a uniform particularly? No. But I think it may be part of a solution, and insofar as you said, there's a policy, I had asked the policy committee to consider it. Consider the alternatives, and see, maybe we do some research, see whether other schools have had a good result or a bad result from doing that. It's investigatory right now, but I do think, I see a, in my mind, I see a problem is that some of the dress, the way people are dressing is inappropriate.
I agree. I agree, it's inappropriate. Send them home. Tell them, give them a sweatshirt to wear the whole day until they dress appropriately. I'm totally with you, I understand, it is appropriate. I can't believe what I see kids wearing. But you're not, you have a policy, you're not enforcing it. So.
There's been, there's been conversation on that, Christine, one way or the other, and it's still, it's ongoing. It is ongoing.
Name is Tom Beltoff, seventy-four Beechwood Road in Oradell. Couple questions and couple statements, I'll make it quick. The academies, my personal belief is a brain drain and a financial drain of this district in a big way. We could have all types of organic chemistry classes and any other classes, and we didn't have to pay so much to the academies. I'm not against the academies, I'm against the academies for people that can afford to send their kids to private school, and they're getting a tax-free education, top-notch. I think the academies are great, but if you can afford to pay, you should pay. I think this school has a significant drain on its budget, and it's brain drain for people going to different private schools. An academy, in my opinion, is a private school that's funded one hundred percent by taxpayer money. Second, I think organic chemistry, you know, I'm not clear as to why we don't have it. Is it cost? Is it scheduling? Is it, you know? And if it's cost, if there's, I know there's a bare number of people that have to sign up for class, and I understand the board's opinion, that you opened up Pandora's box for organic chemistry this year, you know, economics next year, whatever, 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 and I understand that's a concern. But is it because of dollars? I'm not clear. Or is it scheduling? Or is it the students can't decide between A.P. physics and organic chemistry? So I assume you're all clear, I'm not clear, okay? If it's a dollar issue, I think we should find the dollars. Related to that, the inference that it's organic chemistry or sports, I take major offense to, okay? I think that academics is so important in school, sports, music, art, all just as important. To isolate just academics versus all that, I think is short-sighted. And I think we should keep our eyes open for that. I'm a father of five kids, four graduated from Riverdale, great school. I think everyone that comes here, with minor exception, really wants the better of themselves. And in a lot of ways, a large majority of the kids that go here don't know what they wanna do yet. I've seen it with my kids, they graduate, if you wanna be a doctor, that's great, but ninety percent of the kids that are gonna go to college are gonna change their major halfway through college. Whatever opportunity you can give them, I think you should do it. So question back to you, is it dollars? So, question back to you, is it dollars, is it scheduling, or is it the students can't make a choice? You know, if it's students that can't make a choice, then, I'm sorry, kids, we have to make choices in life. You're going to like some, you're not going to like others, okay? Uniforms, I think it's great, but yet, you know what? Being the father of two daughters and three boys, be a parent. My daughter's inappropriately dressed when she leaves the house, she's not leaving the house, okay? Some of the people, the way they dress around here, I don't know if their parents aren't home or they don't care, but you know what? We can't have the board become us, okay? We are parents, we're, you're all parents, okay? I don't need the board to tell me what my kids should wear, but as a parent, I should be smart enough to say, I'm not sending my daughter out looking like a pole dancer, okay? You could take that for what it is, okay? How much, last question, how much and how many students are going to charter schools from the District of River Edge in Oradell that we're paying for?
Charter schools?
Charter schools.
Do you mean like the-
Academies.
No, 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 two separate.
Okay, academies.
Academies, we have about 40 youngsters.
Forty?
Yes, and about-
And how much per student is that costing the district?
It's approximately $8,500 a student.
Okay.
Plus transportation.
There's your organic chemistry class kids, okay?
And then some.
And then some.
I'd like to, I kind of like to, to make sure that people don't misunderstand my earlier comments regarding why I picked the number eight. I was trying to research some financial justifications for running the organic chemistry class with less than 10 students. For anybody who'd like to, you can go on our website and look at our board policy, and also the regulation for class size. And I'd direct you to look at file code 6151. And it talks about the high school parameters for the size of a class. And departures from the parameter require board of ed approval. So it was very right that students came forward to the board to ask about this class. And it says, departure from the parameters requires approval of the board on a case-by-case basis before a class section with less than 10 students can be formed or maintained. So I was looking to, to find out how to justify less than 10. And as I was going through some papers and some files, I couldn't really find a class that was less than 10, but I did find a program that would cost the same amount of money as the roughly $20,000 ballpark window that we're talking about. And it was the hockey team for two years running, and it was the varsity program, and it roughly was about eight students in the varsity that year at about $20,000. But by no means do I want to pit our academics versus our athletics. I am totally in belief that we have to support and nurture both the mind and the body. I have a son who played Division One athletics in college. I totally support athletics, but I think we have to be careful to justify some of our costs. And I was looking for a way to say that eight isn't a problem, this is two less than the parameter that requires board approval. And I don't know how many students, and to answer your question, Mr. Beltoff, would want to take this class, because it's the missing piece of data I can't seem to get. I know you weren't here at our last board meeting, but you can look on TV and see that students very eloquently asked, what would I have to give up to take this class? And I have petitioned through the course of this week to get that data, and we do not have it. I know where the conflicts are, as I stated earlier, but I do not know what the students would choose. I am very glad to see all the parents here advocating for this, whenever a class, be it economics, chemistry, one of our other electives, or, or major courses, terminal courses, whatever it might be, if there's an interest within the public, this is where you should be going. This is, this is your representation up here. And it is totally permissible for this to be looked into. I don't know how this board feels about it, but after seeing this many parents come forward tonight, can we reconsider looking into this class and getting that missing piece of data? Would we have eight, nine, 10 students come forward? Is it possible?
I'm just going to throw out a comment. You say eight students, that's 20% below the minimum. That's a big number.
Two students.
But if it was, if we had a requirement of 100 and it was 80, it's still 20%. It's numbers.
I'm still for student advancement.
I am all for student advancement.
And that's what you said at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'm all for student advancement, the passion, and you know what? What I also heard, again, what I heard, was my son also went out, found other, other options there, bought a book, thing, is, our goal should be passion for learning, there should be other ways for them to find things as well. We could try to provide them. We cannot provide everything for everybody. That's the unfortunate, there's decisions that have to be made. That's just, it was a decision that we voted on.
Some of us are still not clear. Is it, is it a dollar issue, or is it an issue that, and I can understand that this is sensitivity, are you concerned about opening up Pandora's box by saying, okay, this year we're going to allow organic chemistry, well, what's it going to be next year? What's it going to be the year after that? To the point where we have so many classes, then it becomes a major issue.
Tom, I'll speak to that, I think I said that in my comments, is, last year it was BC Calc, this year it was organic chem, next year it's pottery 101, whatever it may be, I am of the feeling that as we continue to go through this, every year there's going to be something that comes up, and-
So, so to be clear?
Classes, my, my issue had nothing to do with finances. But classes are self-selected, and the po- the policy of the board is 10 is the threshold, okay? Where it makes sense to, or in aggregate, run a class. And there are exceptions, and BC was made, the exception was made is because in 11th grade, I believe there were 13 kids, and then it dropped to nine in the senior year. And so we ultimately made the decision as a board that that was the terminal class, and they had already taken step one of that class. So it was approved last year. But again, this is, I'm only speaking for myself on why I voted no for it, is, you know, we've got to put a line in the sand, and, you know, we have a policy that says 10 is the minimum, and, you know, so with that, you know, we don't know how many of these nine would fall out, and so we'd be making an assumption.
And would it be worth to throw it out again, to say, will 11 sign up? I mean, is, or is, or sign up?
That was done last meeting.
Again, I, I am way past, okay, I didn't come to the prior meetings, but sitting, listening to the crowd, it's like, you know, there's a lot of passionate people about organic chemistry. You know, I'm glad they didn't have organic chemistry when I went to school, but, you know, they have it now, and if they're passionate about it, that's great. But I wasn't clear, and I listened to the board, is it money? Is it they don't want to open up Pandora's boxes, the scheduling conflict, or the students have to make a choice and they can't make a choice? I'm still not really crystal clear, okay? And I think there's some people in the audience that are not crystal clear. Yeah. LA is beating the devils right now, 2-0 in the Stanley Cup, sorry. Yeah. Sorry.
So is it your jersey?
Sorry, yeah. I throw some humor out there, which is not humor, because you all, you should see what your faces look like from this side, okay?
LA winning again.
Just to speak to Mr. Beltoff, where he wasn't at the meeting that we talked about BC last year, but I believe I abstained, I don't think I voted no, I think I abstained, because my objection to going forward with the BC last year was, we would be here again, and we're here again. And, you know, as Roger said, we, we're always going to be here, because there are always people, there are always a small number of people who are going to be interested in something. And I believe there is at least 10 classes that people chose that aren't running for lack of enrollment. And peop- and like I said before, people are asking us to make a value judgment of, is, that, that the math or the science is more important than the music or the, you know, when, when somebody threw out pottery, you heard a sigh from the, to that kid, that's just as valuable as the organic chemistry. And we can't always make that option. So, that, that, it didn't have to do with money, from my perspective, and I don't think it did for most of the board. I think Michael was just looking for, he's, he likes to put a number to the, to the event, and so I think that's why he would ask that.
I, I saw the resistance for, for the number. But I, my point is, yeah, you know, you're right, we'd be here again this year, and if we do it now, we'll be here next year, but that ain't so bad. It ain't so bad at all. If we have people who make the effort of putting a presentation on here, and you say, well, it's going to open up the floodgates, well, there's an easy way of doing it, how many, how much of a flood have we had this year? Organic chemistry. Last year, math BC, okay? The first one, the first group that comes up to us with a valid, and, you know, value judgment? We make value judgments every time we meet as a board. That's what we're here for. We're representing the people out there here to make a judgment. Where do we want the money to go to? What's more important, especially in those years that were really tight? So, it's not something new to us. I think that, you know, we are adults enough that we could deal with a flood in the future, let's try and address the few things that we can, and I've brought up the $20,000 for reason. Compared to the size of our budget, our $30 million budget, it's not that much. Per kid, it's a lot, but we do make, do spend a lot on other things, a lot per kid on other things here. And when you have this type of dedication, you know, I think it's worthwhile for us to spend the time to be here again. And next year, when somebody asks us, I'm going to go and ask, I'm sort of, Doc, and others will go ahead and ask, why don't we consider that, Mr. Fletcher, can you do something with the scheduling? Can we go below? I mean, of course, we just don't do it this year, doesn't mean that we're not going to ask for it again. I mean, because I think passionately, we need to encourage these kids to go the extra mile. And quite honestly, it's unusual for kids to go ahead, for adults to go ahead and ask for extra work, and organic chemistry's extra work.
Vito?
One of our main function has been, remains and will be to make policies, so-
Perhaps to avoid the recurrence of such unfortunate selfish choice like, maybe we should consider revising the policy. Maybe 10? It's not the right number. If we're not worried about the expense, and we certainly, as a board, cannot pick and choose that one class has more merits over another, then we stay kind of neutral, and say that the school is run properly and correctly, and revisit the policy. Without getting too personally involved in the individual cases that have come up or may come up in front of us. It's within our purview to reexamine the policy, and if there are changes to be made, we do it.
Could be both ways on the debate.
But it, you can't, my point is simple, you can't pick and choose. You can't wait for the next case to come up. We've had two cases, one this year, one this year. There could be another two or three cases in the making. Then we, as a board, need to revisit the policy.
Can I just, I want to state the piece of the policy of the class size, 6151. The superintendent, with board approval, reserves the right to establish classes under 20. Does not say under 10, says under 20.
I'm on the regulation, is there a regulation place? Under 10, it does allow board decision.
Ah, exactly, sorry.
I was referencing the regulation, and I did state that.
Because the policy says 20, I'm like, it keeps saying 10.
Right, but the regulation is, no, 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 you have, I, I think I made that clear, it's the regulation.
Oh, there it is.
You gave the number.
Yeah, 6151 regulation.
And the C, under C, right?
Right, it clarifies, it, it, it's-
Because it starts up A's.
Maybe we do need to make that consistent, but-
Class size below 18 is A.
Yep.
And then you go to terminal courses.
And you'll read part C at the bottom, it says, and it typically says, case-by-case basis, which is exactly what we're dealing with.
And I could then too, with Vito said, maybe you need to address the policy, because you know what? They took their rights, as is everything else. You took your rights, you had, you came to the board, there was a vote taken. Unfortunately, people, some people didn't like the, the result of the vote, that's just, you know what? You, you have many votes. You vote for a president, you may not like it, but you have to live by it. You have choices to be made, choices were, were made. You know, whether you like it or not, unfortunately, sometimes you have to live by what the, you know, it's a democracy.
So, we're saying there's no interest in reconsidering it at this point, or looking for more data or more information at this point?
I would just like to bring up two points, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there are two, there's AP Spanish and AP French this year, both with kids under the amount, under 10. So, you said there was only one class, I believe there's three in the school with under 10. I, I may be wrong, but that's what my students tell me. And, second, there's 10 of us signed up for this organic chem class, and I know off the top of my head one more who would go to our guidance counselor tomorrow to sign up for it. Why not just give us the chance to look at the schedule, see if we would make the choice to pick organic over other classes? Just give us that opportunity. Like, the lady said before, we, you don't have that data, you don't know how many of us want it yet. If there's six of us that choose organic chem over physics, then, fine, the class doesn't run, but give us the opportunity to see if the group as a whole would like the class to run. I'm, not all of us are here today, but I'm pretty confident that 95% of us want organic chem over physics, or AP English, or an art class, or something, because that's something we really want to take our senior years. Just give us that opportunity. You don't, don't-
So, I think, I don't know if you're trying to avoid the situation this year by denying the class, and even if you, we know that the class may not run because of circumstances, I hope you're aware that next year, the same problem's going to occur. There's sophomores who are going to be taking AP chemistry in the fall, who are going to be driven to take organic chemistry the following year, and they're going to push for it too. So just putting it off for another year, you're still going to have to face the same problem next spring, I have feeling, because they're sophomores who are saying, we don't have enough in our class schedule, but senior year, I'll be so down to take it. So, if it's not running next year, they're still going to push for it the year after. And, another thing about organic chemistry, someone mentioned it, taking, taking it online, you can't do that with a chemistry course. Chemistry's hands-on, it's a physical science, it's not biology where you can memorize things, or physics where you just learn equations. Chemistry's something that has to be done in lab. So, even though online or a book would be a great alternative, that can only go so far. It's a very kinesthetic topic, where you need to learn with your hands, and you need to see what's going on. So, that's why it needs to be a classroom subject. Thank you.
Frederick area, 395 Hasbro Boulevard, Oradell. I wasn't going to speak tonight, I was just here to observe, but I just wanted to ask a few questions, and then I have a comment. The threshold that we're using for classroom size is, is consistent across the whole school for all the classes, is that correct?
Yes, the parameters?
The parameters are the, the number of students, you said 20, is that correct?
It's 10.
10? So that's consistent for all, for all classes? There's no structured tier level based on criteria that you might determine here at the board? Is that correct? It's, it doesn't exist?
Yes, there is. There's a policy, and then there are guidelines that stratify what we're offering.
In terms of the number of students?
Correct.
Okay, so there's, there's certain requirements that you may need more than 20 students in order to qualify to have a class?
That wouldn't be more than 20 to have a class, it's really the lower end of it. And the higher end of it is if you have more than one section.
Okay. So, I guess the thing that I'm grappling with is, and it's kind of sad to hear, you have students who are, they're, they're working their way through the educational system, and you get these couple of kids that get to the very, very top, and they're looking to get these advanced classes, in this case, organic chemistry. But I'm sure there's other examples. And you're telling them, there's not enough students to get to that level to give you the class. So basically, what you're saying is, you're not mainstream enough, and we're not going to make an exception for you. You, you're the best and the brightest, and you're getting to the very, very top, but there's hardly any competition. And we're saying to them, we're not going to offer you the class, not because of money, or because we don't have a teacher at the time who has the resources and capabilities to teach. You're, you're telling them, no, because of a process. But the process is already in your policy, this is the process. And, and they're participating, it's kind of like a democratic process. And, and they're participating, and it's kinda like a democratic process, where they have to appeal to the board, board has to make a decision. But that's the process. And there's 10 kids, 11 kids, 13 kids, whatever, but there's still 10 kids. And I think that if it gets to this level, you know, you, they're fighting, and they're petitioning, and parents are here, and there's 10 kids here, um, you know, I think we should accommodate them. I mean, this is something that, um, is a very difficult class to get to. And I don't know how you can expect at least 20 students to get to this level within the school. That's just my opinion, and I just wanted to express that. Thank you very much.
We just got an impassioned plea. We voted against having a class with eight kids today. So that's a dead deal. We're not doing anything with that. We've heard an impassioned plea saying that, yes, there are more. Patrick said the conflict is just not gonna work. I'd, I'd like to move right now and say, and ask that this class be held if 10 kids sign up for it. After being informed what they'd have to give up, if still 10 kids wanna go change their...
Do you have to give more than one class?
One class? That's, it's, it's a, they're gonna have to really do something to do it, but if they can, I wanna, at least with 10 kids, our policy talks about 10. With 10 kids, I'd like to, I'm gonna move the board that if 10 kids, after, after Patrick shows them what they're gonna have to give up, still wanna go ahead and go into that one class, if there are 10 of them, that that class go forward.
Second.
But we're moving about a stated policy. I mean, plus we received a memo from Patrick that gave us three scenarios, fourth, fifth, and sixth period, why we didn't have an adequate number.
Let me finish. We just heard from the students, they heard part of what they'd have to conflict, one and two and a, what conflicts they had, and they said they would prefer to get, choose organic chemistry over the conflicted course, which Patrick has said was in a required, it was a core course. But it doesn't sound like it's a required course for graduation. It's a required for graduation, then they have to take it, and that's the only time they can do it. But it's a, if it's a course that they go ahead and say, I don't want it, I'd rather do one over the other, I would say, given the effort that they've made, let's give them a chance. It's, certainly it doesn't appear from the board members here that it'd be the cost is the big issue here. So if it's not the cost, and we can be semi-compliant with the policy and have 10 kids, which is a decent size, especially for an advanced class, I would think. Now, of course, there's always the case that someone is gonna drop out in September or October, but that always happens. So I, I just wanna, we have a...
Wait a second.
Any other further discussion on the motion on the table? 10 students. Tom, can I get a roll call on the motion, please?
Sure.
Roger.
I think we're opening ourselves up for problems, but I will support it. If they get 10.
No.
Stephanie? Patty?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yeah.
Dot?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Michael?
Yes.
Vito?
No.
Joe? I have to say no, because this is where I was before. So it's deadlocked. So we'd have to...
Any other persons?
Any other question?
Hey, Doc, I mean, Darlene.
Darlene?
Darlene Ross River Edge. Off topic, this is it on, the biology ninth grade, I'm not, not biology, ninth grade, algebra, I'm sorry, eighth grade algebra test, were they already administered? The test that you have to take to know whether you've passed it or you take the class again?
It's over.
We don't do that anymore? Oh, I missed the math meeting?
No, no, no.
You missed the memo.
I know, but I thought we still had to take it in order to know if we had to repeat it in ninth grade. No more?
No, they do it, they do it just like you would for another class, it's a teacher recommendation, a parent, a field day.
So sorry, I missed math night, my apologies. You know, about that organic class, so why don't you think out of the box? Why don't you go permas? Why don't you go t-neck? Why don't you go someplace? Maybe someplace else is running it at seven o'clock in the morning at your first class or whatever, and you can co-op, you can take these 10 kids someplace else. Why don't you go see if you can run, take it at Bergen Community? You do this like college, whatever, this other hokey stuff. You know, think out of the box to try to accommodate these 10 kids, if it's not money.
Thank you.
I would just like to say something about the recognition of students who have academic excellence in this school. In April, I think it was April, I had the pleasure to attend the induction ceremony for the National Honor Society, the Math National Honor Society, and the Science National Honor Society. And the National Honor Society inducted 36 new members, the Math National Honor Society inducted 12 new members, and I think that brings them up to a total of, are you in it?
It's not like I got cut out because my average was in the high.
So, but there's very, very few students in the Math National Honor Society. And in total, I know that there's 58 members in the Science National Honor Society at Riverdale. And it was a really nice night, and it's just a really nice recognition for these students who have such great academic achievement. I was very, very disheartened that there was not one administrator from Riverdale at that induction ceremony. And that, to me, really sent a message. I don't understand why out of four administrators in this school, in this high school, that not one of them could be present. I don't know if board members were invited, but not a board member was present either. And to me, that says a lot about a message about how Riverdale, at this point in time, recognizes their academic students. I've seen many of you at football games, I used to see them at baseball games, and concert events, but this was like the biggest academic night for students who pursue academics at a school. Thank you.
Patrick, do we have any information on that?
No. Were we aware that... Michael, I, I don't.
Did you comment about it?
He asked if I had any information about it, and I said, I don't know. The teachers know that I had a conflict on that evening, just as I had a conflict with Tri-M, which was last week, and Alpha Theta Mu.
But you're not, Mr. Fletcher, with respect to you, you are not the only administrator.
I, I realize that, but I'm the only academic administrator in the room, so, and they knew that I had a conflict with those events that evening, just as there was with some of the other stuff.
It just doesn't send a message to students when there's not one administrator or board representative at a function like this.
Are there any other issues, comments?
Should I?
Sure, Dot.
I, I just have to address one comment. I agree, it's, it's been a little unclear throughout this whole discussion what the, the money component is for the stated extra class. But this year, we had an, almost a half a million dollars in surplus that's being dedicated to next year's budget. So my gut feeling, just me as a person, on a very personal level speaking, I'm not sure it's that, but, but one point I just have to make, and this is me speaking as a resident at this point, as part of this whole town hall meeting, I can't say that I agree with the comment that the reason we don't have money or funding, or whatever it might be for this organic chemistry class, is because we're sending some of our students out to some of the county magnet schools. That piece of legislation is outside of the parameters of this board. Students from this community, Ordele, River Edge, any community actually in Bergen County, can choose those schools. They exist for certain reasons, and parents select them for certain reasons. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that my son is a recent graduate of the Teterboro campus. But to think that we have to pit one resident against another resident, one student against another student, isn't right. Parents have choices. They make choices. They may make choices to pay for their child's tuition and send them to a Catholic school or one other type of high school that exists out there. But that's the beauty of this land that we live in, it's a free country. So you take advantage of the legislation that exists. And I'd like to end this discussion of pitting one kid against another kid and, and saying that the money shouldn't follow that child. There, we're all taxpayers. So let's just think, how can we fix this problem going forward? What can we do for whatever may face us as a community going forward, and not look to pit the needs of one student academically versus another? Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment on, on board representation. I, Mr. Ann and I were both at the first Science Honor Society induction, which was a lovely ceremony last year. And I, and I agree, we should, we should, as a board, make a, we, you know, there's some of us that'll be like, oh, I'm going to this, or I'm going to that, but we don't really make a concerted effort to make sure that, that one of us is represented, that the board is represented by maybe one of us, you know?
Considering what we pay this year as in this district.
Okay, but I'm just gonna speak as a board member, you know?
Yeah, I understand, you're a volunteer.
No, but, but I, but I do think that it would be nice for us to open up a dialogue that if something's coming up, that somebody volunteered to go. I, I know people have, hold on, hold, can I finish? I know that in the past, like, boards have rotated at like council meetings for that purpose, to know what's going on and whatnot. And I, and I think that's, uh, thank you for kind of bringing it up there, that it's valid, sometimes we get caught up in what's going on. But, but that's like our joy, you know? Yes, we're volunteers sitting here, but that's like, to go to that, when we go to graduation, that's, that's our joy, you know? So, yeah, so, uh, you know, we should make a more concerted effort to, to go out. I know every year I've had a conflict with the, the art one, I'm always like, I wanna go to the art one, and that never happened. So thank you for mentioning it, because, you know, I, I personally will at least try to make an effort to open up a dialogue. If I can't go, can somebody else go, that kind of thing. Cause it's fun.
Was there an invitation?
No, 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 but I'm just saying, no, but it's on our calendar. No, 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 I, she, it's just on our, you know, it would be on our calendar, it'd be on the calendar of events, things.
But it's not. Maybe we need to do something here to make sure it's on our calendar.
So, fine, but that's what we're just talking about, let's, you know, I said...
It's on the website. What you always say to us, it's on the website.
It is on the website.
It's on the website. Then we miss it.
Yes, it's always, those kind of things are always on the website. It's true.
But there were no administrators last year either, I'm sorry. It's true.
It's a disgrace if I, if I can go one step further, I think, was there a flag? Was there a flag? Was there a flag? The National Honor Society, was there a flag? I don't, I don't actually remember.
Where, where was it held at?
The auditorium.
I'm sure there's a flag.
Was there a flag?
Is there anything further?
Just like to thank the board for having this, I think it's great, it's helpful, you know, have an open discussion, okay?
I just wanna thank the public for coming out tonight, you know, in my four years here, other than maybe budget discussions, the first time...
Coliseum.
That we've had some open feedback, so thank you to the public. And on that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Before it goes, I wanna thank the public for coming and asking questions. And you know what? There might not be a town hall meeting next time, but there's an open session at the end of all our Board of Ed meetings, if you wanna be heard. You also have the emails to the board, you can use that. And it goes to every board member and the superintendent. Thank you. And I'll second.
Freddie, there's a motion to adjourn, a second, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
10:21.